Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, council, city official, and invited guests. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia to do the business of the city. Father, we thank you for this occasion. We worship you and adore you. We are so blessed to be in this city, in this country, as we prepare to celebrate another birthday of our country. But Father, we ask for guidance and direction as we do the business of the city. Come down, give us civil discussion, correct discussion, and make the best judgment for our city and our constituents. We ask these blessings and all blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Raitt, roll, please.
Carrie Hyatt, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roff, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Tulley, Ward 4.
Here.
Carrie Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Alyssa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from June the 19th. And council, you have an opportunity to look these over. Now would be an opportunity to make any additions or changes to those minutes, and if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion, Jeffrey.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We'll start with AZ 25-01. I'll ask Mr. Menino to get us started on that this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a proposed annexation and rezoning to the Technology District for two tracks off of Edouard Ridge Trail, or at least one of them's off Edouard Ridge Trail that Switch has applied for. Planning Commission did hear this and did recommend with conditions. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. Before I open up the public hearing, Mr. Lovell, I want to go back to the last meeting where somebody, one of the residents, presented something questioning the adjacent lot and the ownership of that. I know you did some investigative work on that.
Yeah. Apparently, some of the online maps indicate that that property is owned by Switch. However, if you actually review the Bartow County tax assessor's records and also the deed records, that property has been owned by an individual and that individual's own corporation since 2002. So, at least as of according to all the public records at the courthouse, Switch has nothing to do with that particular individual tract.
Okay. Thank you. I will open up a public hearing for AZ 25-01. This will be a public hearing relative to the zoning portion of the application, and I'll ask anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And with everybody, please, your name and your address for our clerk's records.
Carl Lugens, 114 Old Mill Road, the engineer, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Switch. Thank you, Mayor and council, for meeting tonight. I know it's a big, big night for the holiday weekend in order to take care of some of this business, so we are grateful for what y'all do and thank you for Mayor for taking that time tonight. I don't, from the last meeting to tonight, don't really have a lot to add, Switch. It's just requesting that this be rezoned for this hearing, and obviously, these comments can go forward to the annexation side, but we would request the rezoning and annexation of this property from being in Bartow County to Technology District in the city. There was a request by the Planning Commission to put conditions on the property. We would agree to all the original conditions that were put on the property during the initial track that was rezoned, but we do need this property to have access, an emergency access road to Edouard Ridge Trail. That access will be gated and only used during emergency purposes, and all construction for that road and anything along that road planned on doing from internal of the property and not using Edouard Ridge Trail for construction.
So, the construction of the road, you would actually construct the road from the inside of what is currently Switch out to Edouard Ridge Drive?
That is correct, yeah. So, we would not use Edouard Ridge Drive for construction traffic. They do-
I realize there might be a time or two where it has to, but the main impetus of the construction would not be along that road.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, I'd just like to reserve any time that I have to rebuttal and/or answer any of your questions.
Sure. And we'll keep in mind, this is the zoning hearing, and anything that's said in here could apply to that, but the zoning really is foregoing from county-
County A1.
County A1 to City Technology Park.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wants to speak on the zoning, the zoning portion of this request may speak if they care to on this portion of it? Come on up.
David Calhoun, 200 Edouard Ridge Trail, 16 acres of budding proposed property of the 28. I hope some of y'all have driven up Edouard Ridge Trail. There's two blind curves in that little road. Two cars can barely go. It's not a road that we want any kind of commercial traffic on or any more traffic than we can This is an annexation and zoning hearing?
This, we'll have another public hearing after this one. This is relative to the zoning change from A1 to City of Cartersville-
Okay.
-Technology Park.
So, what we have is, got a nice little neighborhood up there, and really, I don't see the benefit to changing the zoning unless there's some commercial situation going on that really that property is not able to handle. For those of you who have not been there, let me give you an idea. That property is about a quarter mile wide and 300-plus feet deep. There is not a access off of Edouard Ridge Trail. It would be major, major construction to build a road from Switch's property over to Edouard Ridge Trail. Now, I don't think any of us in the neighborhood want that kind of construction. From where they are right now, we can all hear all the construction going on, and dust comes over the ridge over to our houses. It's been going on for a year, and I can imagine trying to build a road at least a quarter mile in a 300-plus-foot ditch that has straight-off access off the Edouard Ridge. I mean, straight down. There's not a place there you can build it. If there was, the previous owner would have sold it for residential, but there is not. Our concern is that much construction in our little quiet neighborhood, and also, the zoning in a neighborhood to transform it into a technology? I don't get it. Now, I'm a property owner in Cartersville, that's some commercial property, pay a lot of taxes. As a businessman, I can't see it. Now, they talked about putting a water tower on that property. I say, no problem with the water tower on the far side. They can't put it on Edouard Ridge side because there's no property there. It's just straight off. No problem with the water tower if that's what they want to do. And I don't really have a problem with the annexation, but the zoning to change our neighborhood into a commercial zoning or a technology zoning, which indicates they want to do something else with it, I'm not for. I don't think any of us are. Plus, when you, in the Planning Commission, I didn't make this meeting, but I was there at the Planning Commission, and they said they wanted to buy it for a buffer. Well, they own 2,000 acres, you know? If they want to buy it for a buffer, why even annex it or rezone it? It's a buffer. I get it. I'm all right with that. They want to own it. But to change it into a commercial zoning or a technology zoning indicates they want to do something else. So, as far as our neighborhood goes, it's a major, major operation to put that kind of effort and road from their property to Edouard Ridge. I own the 16 acres next to it. I've walked the whole property. I promise you, that's not an easy project. That's not a small project. It's not a quick project. We've got $11 billion company trying to do something in a little neighborhood. We just want to be quiet and not be disturbed that much. We'd like to keep our neighborhood in a residential agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we're talking about the zoning portion of the request, AZ 25-01. Anyone else wishing to speak on the topic may do so at this time. Seeing none, did you want to make any further comment in this, or do you want to hold it for the next one?
I'll hold.
Okay. Thank you. I'll close the zoning hearing portion of the request. I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request. We'll talk about the annexation, and just so you know, any of the comments that were made in the zoning, they will transfer over to the annexation and vice versa. We just have to have them separately by law. So, Mr. Lugens, floor is yours.
Yeah, just Carl Lugens, 114 Old Mill Road, talking about the annexation. I just want to answer the gentleman's question, and part of it is, they want to consolidate all this land, and they need to have it all under one zoning because it's not good to have one parcel with a split zoning on it. So, it's, there's financial reasons behind that. When you go to a bank, it's all one zoning, so it's not questionable on title as to what is occurring on the property.
Okay. Thank you. I will say, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Taylor about this, and he said it was fine for me to share that conversation. The county does plan or is in the planning stages of putting a water tower out there. I think one of the gentlemen that spoke last time kind of enlightened us to that fact. As far as any damage to the road that might occur, I think Mr. Lugens had mentioned earlier, the construction would happen, the proposed construction would happen from inside the property towards Edouard Ridge Drive, and that there wouldn't be construction vehicles in any great number going down, up, up and down Edouard Ridge Drive, which I know that was a concern last time as well. And the commissioner did say that if it came to it and there was a need for repairs to that road, that the county would handle it. Now, again, you can, Commissioner Taylor does a fine job with doing what he does, and I'm just letting you know, I had that conversation with him relative to that as I was trying to educate myself a little bit more in preparation for tonight. So, that being said, we'll continue on with the annexation portion of the public hearing. And again, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
Excuse me.
Well, you're here, you made time to be here tonight. Don't halfway think about doing it. If you're here, come on and speak to us.
Thank you for letting me speak to you folks.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming-
Again, your name and your address.
I'm sorry. Donald Wright, 65 Edouard Ridge Overlook. I have the property next door to this gentleman that just spoke. Keeping us in the sequence that I think you're going here, I am not opposed to the data center. I'm not opposed to the annexation personally. My neighbor is. I am opposed to an access road. The county commissioner told me that if the tank was built on that property as planned, that he saw no reason for access to Edouard Ridge Trail, and that it should be coming in from the commercial property from the backside, and that a primary user of that water would be the data center. So, they've got a vested interest in the water supply, and I understand that. I hope that you folks have, and I know you have, seen a master plan for this development. Did it include any of the other encroachments that's occurring around the neighborhood? There's other properties that have been bought up. The city attorney, Mr. Lovell, mentioned the address of 151 Edouard Ridge Trail being owned by somebody other than Switch, as I understood it.
That's correct. That person and his related corporation has owned that property since 2002.
Okay. Why, may I ask, is the Switch using that as their address, as an address? Would you please? Switch Atlanta North, 151 Edouard Ridge Trail Southeast. That's the property that we're talking about?
Yes, sir. I have no idea. I don't know what that-
There's something-
Where that webpage is or what it's on there, all I can tell you is who the legal owner of that property is.
I know the owner. I've known, he used to live on that property, as a matter of fact. Behind that property is where the original water tower was planned, and, you know, I don't know the reasoning for relocating it. I have no opposition to where it's currently going to be planned, but an access road on this 28 acres, if it's denied, the next appeal will become through 151. I guarantee you that. If they're using that as their address, there's a reason for that.
Again, I don't know where that, it might be Googled it. I'm not going to, I'm not here just to speak for or against. I'm just going with what my city attorney says.
And I certainly-
Again, and I know you don't have anything to fear us for sharing that. I believe that you looked it up and you saw, and that's what came up. I would have the same question as well, but I don't have an answer for you.
And that's why I would refer back to the master plan. Does anything like this show up on the master plan?
Again, they didn't have that on their original plot, but as any industry builds, you know, they have the ability to-
To expand.
-add property, and I think as Mr. Lovell had pointed out, the way that property is currently zoned in the county, there's no buffer requirement that's on any of that property, and when it becomes part of the city, if it were to become part of the city, it would need, it would require 100-foot buffer. So, there are some pluses to that. Now, I have been out there, and I did kind of take a look at that adjacent property, and I am certainly no constructor, engineer. I know a whole lot of nothing about a lot of different things, but I would tell you, when you do look at that piece of property, it's funny you say that because-
That's where the road should be.
Because it'd be a lot cheaper to build that road if they were to actually end up buying that. But I can tell you, and I don't know what, I haven't talked to anybody with Switch, I don't know a thing, but, again, you may have spoken into existence, if I was looking to build a road, I would probably build it on that piece of property versus the other one. And again, I can't speak for what Switch may or may not want to do, but all I can tell you relative to that fact that you've got on the board for us right here, the records, again, as Mr. Lovell has pointed out, there is no connection between, as far as legally and what he's got in his records, where Switch has any ownership stake at all in that, in that piece of property. That may change tomorrow.
Sure.
But I don't, I can tell you, we're just dealing with what we have.
I will say this, when we were going through the rezoning for the larger piece, they did say they were going to try to buy some adjoining properties.
Okay. Well, like I said, the second point as far as the access road, this location is approximately one mile from the current entrance. There's no great safety aspect. You'd have a much quicker access out one of the major roads than coming off for whatever reason. And again, Commissioner Taylor saw no reason for the water tower to have to access Edouard Ridge Trail. And I just, I will close with that, and I'll leave you alone.
I don't want to speak for Commissioner Taylor, and I believe you had, I know that you went and spoke to him. The conversation that I had with him, I perceived what he said relative to access using that road differently. And again, I don't, I don't want to speak for him-
Okay.
-nor do I want to argue with you about it, because, again, we're just having a conversation, trying to, trying to figure out what's best here, but anyway.
This piece of property, the 151, is the one that I am really concerned about, because it would be thousands of dollars cheaper to put an access road on it.
And again, it's not my job to make the case or to speak for the commissioner, and I'm, but I am going to try to convey the way I understood what he said relative to that water tower, is that they'd have a couple employees that obviously would go out there a few times, several times a week to check on the status of the water tower, to, you know, take readings and do whatever you have to do to maintain a water tower, and that it would make much more sense, again, I may be, I may have misheard what he said, but I, my understanding was, it would make more sense to use that emergency interest instead of going through the stringent security rigamarole that Switch is going to have on their property, that it'd be much more efficient to access that way. But I may have mis, I may have misheard, and again, I'm not trying to refute what you said. I'm just, I may have construed it differently or maybe incorrectly.
If that were to happen, then why wouldn't the county put in the road to get access to it and not have access to the Switch property?
I can't answer that question.
It is a net gain for Switch to have an access through there. And like I said, I think this is just a preliminary to go to 151. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll continue on with the public hearing, the annexation portion of request AZ 25-01. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time.
All of the other stuff goes in the record, don't care.
Yes, sir.
No problem. Annexation, highest and best use. What's the city to gain? A little bit of property tax? What else? I see nothing. I see nothing but disruption to a community. That's all I can see. Does it make sense if it's all about the water tower? Why has it got to be access if it's county water town? Why we got to put it in a city? There's some things I don't understand that maybe you guys can help us out on the next meeting or your own discussions, but as a neighborhood, we would receive no benefit from it, no water, no sewer. It's too expensive to put something up through that mountain. That's a mile off of Bates Road up to the top. So, why would the city want to annex this property? Don't know. I can't see the benefit of it. So, again, we're just a neighborhood. We've got $11 billion corporation trying to come in and disrupt our lives? Doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense to annex it. I don't see any benefit to the city unless there's some other means coming up, but not right now. Can't see it. So, I am against the annexation, and I think if this meeting wasn't on July 3rd, there'd probably be several others from the neighborhood here, but I think Don and I speak for the majority of people there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on the annexation portion of AZ 25-01 may do so at this time? Final thoughts or anything? You get the last word?
Yeah, I'll just, Carl Lugens, 114 Old Mill Road, again. I just want to make some clarification at the, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole about this because I don't know how much it has to do with the annexation or zoning, but the 151 Edouard Ridge Trail became known to us during the last hearing here as well. I notified Switch, and they sent a cease and desist to a third-party locator that locates businesses. They have no, they have no connection to the owner of the property who currently owns the property now or no connection to Switch. They're simply just a third-party locator that goes around and puts businesses' addresses, and I think they got this one wrong, but they were notified to remove that from their posting. Other than that, again, it's to have the property as a single property within the city makes a lot of sense to Switch, and that is why we're here to request that, and the only intentions we have is a emergency access road. It's not about the distance on emergency access roads. It's about what happens if your primary access is blocked. So, we, you know, there is, there is a quick response times, time to thing which considers blockage of primary access, and Mayor, you are correct, there's a very stringent security system that they're going to be installing, and they'd have to go through multiple layers. The county would not say that they won't have the right to do that. They will, and they certainly will have that right, but this would be a much quicker and easier way for the common routine checks on that for the county to use, but primarily, it is a emergency access for Switch, not necessarily a road for the county or water tower. It's primarily for Switch.
Does that road, again, I know they're building in several phases out there for several years, does this road, is this more for future phases or the phase that is currently in place, or as you mentioned, two different places?
So, it would be for a second phase that currently they're working on Phase 1 of the property, and this would be for a Phase 2 of the property that I would say that should start within the next six months.
I guess I'm going to ask you to put a little feeling into the, but your reaction to the neighborhood that says you're, how disruptive do you anticipate this process?
So, it's about, you know, it is about six acres of clearing that we have to do on the 28. The gentleman is correct, it's very steep terrain that we have to go through. In that area where it goes down into the valley will be the largest piece that will be, that the timber will have to be cut. We're certainly investigating all ways to minimize that, and we also, as you mentioned, there's a 100-foot buffer. In the county, there's not a buffer currently, and there are no, and there are no issues about putting roads on an A1 or a driveway on A1. We wouldn't be allowed access at that point, but it makes, again, it makes more sense logistically to have this all in the city of Carson.
Mr. Lovell, the condition, is there a condition that exists? I guess where does it become, if it's gated, I'm guessing it comes gated right at the head of Edouard Ridge Drive?
Yeah, there'll be probably two gates at this point, because part of it, the first gate will be a minor gate that the county will be able to have access to at any point, and beyond the point where they would turn off to go to their facilities, there'd probably be a more robust gate at that point.
Is there any value to putting up, I mean, restrict, I understand the neighbor's concerns about you open it up as an emergency road and then it, I mean, I don't see it ever becoming anything other than that, but again, I'm looking at some way, if council were to decide to move forward on this, is there some condition or assurance that it would always remain a private emergency road?
You could make it a condition of zoning, and if you made it a condition of zoning, of course, there's no 100% guarantee, but they would have to come back and ask the mayor and council at that time to change that condition of zoning with respect to that. You know, you could very easily make a condition of zoning that they would have to have gated access to include knock boxes for local utilities and emergency services, which is what gated accesses are. And unlike Carl, I really don't know if the gate would be right at the beginning of the property line, or if the utilities and emergency services might ask for it to be back 20 feet or something so there's room for them to-
Vehicles to go in.
Yeah, go in, and then unlock the gates, but, you know, that is something that's normally handled during design with the engineers and the emergency services and utilities coordinating that to whatever works best for them and that piece of property.
Wouldn't we also want to put, assuming it's proved a condition that the construction of the road would have to be done, as you had mentioned, internally through the Switch property and not off of the Edouard Ridge?
Correct.
You'd want all construction equipment to access the property from Switch's property, not off Edouard Ridge, I believe is what you're saying.
Yes.
And I think Carl, both the Planning Commission, and I believe that your first reading indicated Switch had no problems with that.
That's correct. That's correct.
And that can be a condition? Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, go ahead, we'll continue it, just know that Mr. Lusens, the applicant always gets the last word, so.
The terminology of emergency access refers to a road capable of handling emergency equipment. You are not going to get that kind of road unless you do the road. You're not going to put a gravel road that emergency equipment can get up there. This is hill, valley, so it's not emergency, it's a convenience access for the Switch personnel. Hey.
And again, I don't, I'll step in the waters, I'm not, I mean, if they're working with our fire and police folks on the construction of a private road for our access, I would assume that in that design process, we would be ensuring that our vehicles can safely traverse and access those?
Yes and no.
Okay.
I mean, we would definitely make sure that it would be safe for emergency access and that our vehicles would be able to go on that, whether that would be paved or gravel. But the utilities and the engineer and design folks from the individual, they would be deciding which type of emergency vehicles would be going over that for the emergency access. Like, emergency access for a fire truck requires a different type of road than emergency access for an ambulance, let's say. So, you know, depending upon the parameters of the emergency access, it would affect the type of road that the city would require to be built.
So in that regard, we can condition it so, we can condition so, I mean, I would think, I would think the applicant would want to have, I mean, again, if the point is to have an emergency road, if, let's just say, God forbid, there's a horrible tornado that takes out the initial entrance to Switch and there's a fire out somewhere in Switch, they would want to have something that would be up to speed that the fire and emergency personnel could get out there through that. But I could ask, I could ask the applicant that when we're...
The county doesn't like to bring fire equipment up our road. It is so Switchback in this, so, I mean, that is another aspect of this. And the school buses that are required to go up there by law, they don't like to come up there either. But they do, because it's the law that the children aren't picked up. So again, I'll leave you alone.
Thank you. No, that's why we're here tonight. I'll ask you to kind of clarify what, to what standard and to what degree you would want access for what vehicles?
Exactly, no, we would want fire, ambulance, police, but also emergency in this case could be a fixture of a fiber optic line or a water or something like that, that, you know, could be a utility emergency, because there are major utilities within the site. So it would accommodate, you know, different types of vehicles and whatever the city during our engineering process, we determine that is necessary for that to happen is what we would install.
Okay. I would guess the thought would be, even like the ladder truck to be able to get back there?
Yeah, even the ladder truck would be able to go back there.
Anyone? Thank you.
One more time.
Every time you come up, he gets one more time too, but that's fine.
That's all right.
Listen, y'all have made time to be here, and go right ahead.
In the planning commission, this started out as buying this piece of property as a buffer for his property. Then he brought up, okay, maybe we need to build a road on it, because we're thinking about putting a water tower on it. A data center uses 5 million gallons of water a day. I heard him mention the new ones are much more efficient. But even though they're much more efficient, they're building the data centers twice as big. So all this, and it came up in the planning commission, it may be use a water tower for other residents in the city, whatever, but it's going to require every bit of that. So all this is about that, no question. So again, total disruption to our community, a straight-off 300-foot drop, and he's wanting to build a road in there, you can imagine that's not going to happen, he says six acres? Six acres of this? That's all. So the second point that I just heard was, and if you look at the property, the way that's situated, that pink is Zone PD, development. If they want to put a road through there and connect over to their property, they want a road to the middle of that property. They're not just going to use it for an access road. They want a road to the middle of that property where they can access it. Again, taking our neighborhood for their benefit, we're residents of this community, they've spent a lot of money, but that's their point, is to build a road to the middle of that property. It's not just to access a county tower or water. They got 2,000 acres, they could put that water tower anywhere they wanted to. They can access anywhere they wanted to and make a major road through there, which is their plan to do. But you're telling me that they're going to have two entrances and they're worried about a blockage and then want to put an access road off a little community road that can't hardly support school bus? Don't make sense, guys. So that's my point.
Thank you, sir. Any final thought? Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the annexation, public hearing for AZ 25-01, and we'll turn it over to council for further discussion amongst council and staff or for consideration. I don't make motions, but I would say if council were to consider, I do think the conditioning that Mr. Lovell and I spoke about earlier would be appropriate, again, ensuring that...
This is the annexation, though, would that be where you put the condition?
It would be in the annexation, I do believe, would it not be?
Normally, we would put it on the zoning.
On the zoning part?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what the condition should be is if y'all wish to do it, I think it should be that the road be built to the highest standard for emergency vehicle access.
And that it remain solely an emergency road?
Yes.
Would that be? But this is, what is up for consideration from council?
Would it be a change to condition number 10 on the listed conditions?
Say that again?
The condition I'll just mention, would be a change to the condition number 10 on the listed conditions.
Okay. Okay. This is the annexation that the city is, that is before council right now for y'all to consider, simply the annexation of that property. And I believe all the conditions are relative to the zoning of the property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So right now is, the decision amongst council is the annexation of this parcel of property?
Motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
All in favor, the caper saying aye?
Aye.
And the annexation is approved unanimously. Now we take up the zoning issue, and council, the ball's in your court.
Motion to approve with conditions from planning commission with the alter number 10.
Second.
Wait. Additionally, the construction has to be done from the side of the Switch property?
And that can be made as condition 11?
Yes, it could.
Good job, Gary. That was my motion.
So technically amended that, that's included in your motion?
Yep.
Are there any other discussions or thoughts? All right, so we do have a motion on the table with those conditions, is there a second on that?
Second.
So I've got a motion of seconds, is there any other discussion? If not, got a motion of second, all in favor, the caper saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Z 25-02.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, this is a proposed rezoning at 350 North Irwin Street from light industrial to general commercial. Planning commission did recommend approval of this, and there have been no additions or changes since the first week.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? Seeing none, I'll open up a public hearing for Z 25-02, asking anybody who wishes to to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z 25-02, turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, the caper saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on with Z 25-03.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council, this is a proposed rezoning off of Thornwood Drive, and we've been discussing it off and on for the past several months. Planning commission did recommend approval of this version of this request. The applicant has requested that it be tabled due to some new information that came up regarding some recorded easements and what's going on. And the applicant is present for this request.
Procedurally, Mayor, what you should do if the board, council wishes, is you call the applicant up and you adhere his request to table, and then y'all would make a motion with respect to that, to approve or deny it. And if you approved it, then at y'all's discretion, you can still hold the public hearings. If you deny it, then of course you would have the public hearings.
So we can have the discussion or have the request made to table it without actually opening up the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's do that. Mr. Stewart?
Robbie Stewart, 408 Terrill Drive. About a week or so ago, we were doing title work on the property, and we were informed there was an easement that's recorded, this off of Clubview Drive. And the easement, I don't know, Keith, did you share the...
I sent a copy of that plat to all members of council.
So there is a easement comes in with a cul-de-sac to the benefit of the adjoining property owner. We were not aware of that from the seller. All the information we had, surveys and stuff, did not indicate any of that. Once we realized that through the title work process, we realized that it would change the site plan. And then in addition, we requested the seller to do an alta survey, and they have hired attorney and a surveyor to go in and do an in-depth survey to see any other issues that may arise out of this piece of property. Right now, that particular easement would probably cost... These lots right here is where that cul-de-sac is. In addition, and we're not saying it doesn't exist, but we have, the attorney is still looking for the easement on Thornwood. So this property has some issues that we would like to, you know, we're in the process of working out. So we're not ready to move forward with the rezoning until we figure out all of the issues with the easements on the property and what there is to buy.
Questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? Again, I know a whole lot of nothing about a lot of different topics, but it seems to me, again, is this commonplace to not have easements established when you submit things for development?
Is it commonplace? Typically speaking, the easements show up in the surveys. And there's been a survey that's been provided by the seller through the previous applicant and myself, none of that showed up. When I went to the seller, when we realized this, they said they had no idea that this easement is in existence. I did talk to staff, Randy did remember it way back in the day, because what happened was, the particular property owner was going to have a non-conforming lot, and he was trying to develop road access, public road access, to have a conforming lot. And so this easement got recorded in 2008, but we were not notified of it. So to say that, you know, we should have done an alta survey day one, Mr. Mayor, I mean, maybe, maybe so. We were taking the information given from the seller, and so now, you know, we've punted and gone back to do it more in depth, because we didn't want to take what was just given to us the first time, now we've got more questions.
I understand. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stewart?
So why don't you just pull it, why don't you just pull this rezoning and come back in six months? Why try to keep pushing forward to it? Why not just pull it?
So that discussion has been talked about. We were hoping that the attorney and the surveyor would complete the alta survey before the next, the 17th meeting that you all have. We're not guaranteed that that's going to happen soon. I mean, we've talked about pulling it and waiting it. We were hoping that we would get the information we needed to make the final decision whether or not. We wanted to move on with the purchase of the property before the 17th.
Any other questions?
Is there anything?
So are you making requests of us?
I would say that you pull this and get some ducks in a row, make sure you have all your things before coming back to council, because whether the seller didn't have his stuff, like he'll take ownership of that, but that's what I would suggest to you. I'm not your counsel, though, but...
Mr. Fox?
So are you asking us, are you asking us to table this?
That was the request that I was making to table it.
I do want to say that if it is requested to be tabled, I believe the earliest that we could have it come back before y'all would be our first meeting in August. And then we would also have, it would require two readings before the council. That's assuming you wanted to table it to be heard by council. You, of course, could also remand it back to planning commission if you wanted, and they would have to go through that process with them again, and then it would come back before y'all for two readings. Or of course, you can deny the request to table, and then you proceed with your public hearings.
Any other questions for Mr. Stewart? Thank you, sir. Any other discussion amongst council or staff? If not, a motion, I guess the request is a motion to table this application. If someone cares to make that motion, they may do so at this time.
I make a motion to deny the tabling of the request.
Okay, got a motion to deny tabling the request, do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right, so I've got a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, likes, uh, oh, okay. So the motion to deny the tabling is passed, which means we move forward with a public hearing relative to Z 25-03. And ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Robbie Stewart, 408 Terrill Drive, Carlsel, Georgia. At this point in time, I would like to pull a rezoning.
Is that in order?
He can make a request to withdraw. If he does make that request, it is withdrawn for six months from that point. You, of course, also do have the right, if you would like to proceed with a public hearing and hear the request, and then at the end of that, if you denied it, the request could not be heard again for another six months. So from a practical point of view, if it's withdrawn or denied, it's still going to be six months before it can come back before you.
Okay. All right. Questions for Mr. Stewart on the request to pull? Thank you, sir. So I can...
Can I ask for clarification for a minute, please?
Sure.
Keith, so we, we, Mayor and Council cannot hear it for six months, or it has to be heard within six months?
Cannot hear it for six months.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's this owner, this applicant, and this exact point?
No, it doesn't matter the owner and it doesn't matter the applicant. As long as it is a similar residential-type plan, it could not be brought back before you for six months. Hypothetically, say they came in and said they wanted to build a hospital there. Hypothetically, say they wa, came in and said they wanted to build a hospital there or some other commercial use. That could come back before y'all, before the six months, because that would be an entirely different type of use than what is being withdrawn or denied by this board.
Okay. And do we continue the public hearing? I know we've got one gentleman from Thornwood.
Y'all can, uh, you know, uh, the request has been made to withdraw, for y'all to allow this request to be withdrawn. Um, so you could make a motion and a second on that if you want it. Or if you want it to deny the request for withdrawal, then you proceed with the public hearing.
Okay. So.
And if there is no motion, you proceed with the public hearing.
Okay. So, inside this public hearing, we can make a mo, the motion can be made?
Make a motion with, with respect to this withdrawal only.
Okay. So, chair is willing to entertain a motion, is?
Motion to accept the withdrawal.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I got a motion, a second, all in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
The motion is withdrawn and. Very good. Um, Mr. Manino, you have the next item of City View Annual Software Maintenance.
Yes, this is the software we're currently using. We're in the process of switching it to Open Gov software. This will be our last annual renewal as we transfer the data over, and with that, we recommend your approval of this request.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, you saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Council, chair will entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda?
Several.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. Chief Ellis, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I see, you know, Frank, Chief McCann sends you here because you don't have to do parades anymore. She's going to make you work tonight, huh?
That's correct.
Good. Well, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be seen. I'm requesting approval of pay, or the yearly subscription for Lexi Poll, which is a software that generates policies and reflects federal and state laws and law enforcement best practices. Uh, this annual recurring cost is twenty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents, and it will be paid by using federal asset forfeiture funds.
Thank you. Question, chief, on this? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, it's your turn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, two infrastructure improvements, um, are required to enhance the system capacity in Highland Seventy-Five Park and to serve the occult. Project proposals were requested from three contractors, uh, for both projects, but only one was, was received for each. Southeastern Natural Gas Services of Rome Incorporated submitted a proposal of a hundred eighty thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars thirty-seven cents for the loop feed installation and a hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents for the occult main extension. Both projects are budgeted expenses, council's approval to accept the proposals and authorize the execution of the contract recommendation.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foy, you're up. Good evening to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. The, the Public Works Office building at three thirty South Irwin Street's been undergoing renovations over the past several months. Prior to the project's completion, just recently, one of the HVAC units failed and required immediate replacement to avoid delays in occupancy. As of today, it has not been replaced. Uh, Mike Jones Hegan Air provided a quote of ten thousand five hundred dollars for the replacement installation of a new five-ton HVAC system. Public Works respects, respectfully request Mayor and Council approval for this purchase. The expense will be covered by the twenty-twenty-five remodeling budget, uh, one hundred dash thirty-one hundred dash fifty-four dash thirteen hundred that we're using to do the remodeling project.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Stephen on this? If not, a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. And Chief Champion, you got the next couple here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for, uh, the request for approval for EPR fireworks, which was a, a new record management system for the fire department. It will make us compliant with a national emergency response information system, uh, that will go into effect January first of two thousand twenty-six. Uh, this is also allowing us to be integrated with a CAD that we currently are using at the nine-one-one center uh, for a total cost of thirty-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars, and it is a budgeted item. We do request your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item for you, sir.
Uh, yes, this, uh, next item is for our annual renewal of Vector Solutions, which is our training platform that maintains our records. Uh, the total cost of this is thirteen thousand six dollars and sixty-two cents, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief, Mr. Porta?
Yes, sir.
Keep the ball rolling.
Uh, governor first for founder PTSD program renewal, second half, the cost of this for this fiscal year is eleven thousand twenty-six dollars. Recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Arch, Arch Insurance has come in with a good proposal for our workers' compensation for the next two years with a one-year price of a hundred five thousand nine hundred eighty-nine, it's a two-year rate guarantee, and I recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Cyber insurance coverage?
Yes, uh, last meeting, I asked you to approve travelers' insurance with a million dollar coverage, but since then, I found out there's another provider can provide us three million coverage, and that's Cowbell. So, I'll need two motions, if approved, one to rescind last meeting's, uh, travelers' insurance coverage for cyber and, uh, to select Cowbell Insurance to provide cyber insurance coverage for the city.
So, chair will entertain a motion to.
Rescind.
Rescind the travelers' cyber insurance.
Motion to approve rescinding travelers. Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. None, chair will entertain a motion to approve on the Cowbell cyber insurance coverage policy.
Make a motion to approve Cowbell.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. He doesn't need more Cowbell.
I just want to say.
Miss, thank you. Mr. Lovell?
Mayor, this is a resolution, um, where the court clerk and the judge have gone through our municipal court fines, and they have updated the base fines, and they are asking for your approval of that via resolution. If council approves it, the fines will probably go into effect as of Monday. If you deny it, they'll make another attempt, and if you take no action, the fines then go into effect thirty days from today's date. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item for you, Mr. Lovell, second reading of the municipal court session schedule.
Yes, Mayor, this is updating the court holiday, um, schedule and to basically allow them to not have court when there's a holiday on the Friday preceding the court. Where right now, they would have that Friday, that holiday for that, uh, Friday, the court holiday would be the Monday before that Friday. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keep rolling, Keith.
Uh, Mayor, this is a standard dedication to maintenance agreement for Hom- Hominy Walt for water and sewer infrastructure. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, those two added items. Mr. Porta, you've got the first.
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is an agreement with, uh, Park County Board of Health and the city for use of the civic center in case there's a need for emergency with, uh, strategic national stockpile point of dispensing agreement. So, recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have an emergency ordinance reading you'd like for us to consider.
Yes, Mayor, um, these, the city, um, allows distilleries under its alcohol ordinance, but we have never issued licenses for them, um, because we allow them to be permitted through the zoning ordinance. Um, the state has recently apparently changed its, uh, policies related to that, and they are now requiring the city to issue a license to them. There's currently an application pending with the state for a distillery to locate here. So, I'm recommending that y'all approve these amendments to the alcohol ordinance, which will allow the city to issue a distillery a license. The basic conditions that are contained in the ordinance are that, one, they would have to be in an, in, in industrial zone property. And number two, they would also have to get a, um, well-served letter from the appropriate water department indicating there's sufficient capacity for the water usage necessarily, necessary for their distillery. Um, an additional item is, unlike most alcohol licenses, I'm recommending that this one be approved by the planning and development director directly, since the only two conditions for them to meet are whether or not they have a zoning, proper zoning classification and the submission of a water letter. This is recommended by staff for your approval.
And this gets us in line with, with what the state needs us to do.
This allows us to issue the licenses for the state to review the applications.
And Councilman Roth brought up a, an excellent point during the work session. Some people might hear distillery and think tasting room or something like this. This is something entirely different than that, and this is not what we're approving.
No, no, there is no tasting room allowed for this type of, uh, distillery. This is actually a manufacturing facility, basically just like Budweiser. Instead of making beer, they're making whatever distilled spirit they're making there.
Okay. Thank you. So, there's no retail component to it?
No.
Absolutely. Okay. And you're asking, again, you gave reason why that needs to be an emergency ordinance? Does that need to be reflected in?
It is already reflected in the ordinance, so when you make your motion, you would just say, I approve the emergency ordinance.
Okay. Someone can say that right now. That'd be fine with me.
I make a motion to approve the emergency ordinance.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Anything else needs to come for council tonight? Uh, I will remind everybody, Independence Day is tomorrow. There will be a parade downtown. There will be fireworks at Dillinger Park and, um, also those that have garbage service on Friday.
Wait till Monday.
Get you Monday. If you got garbage service on Monday, might take till the afternoon. The guys will catch up. It's all going to be okay. So, uh, certainly a day to celebrate our nation's independence and, uh, look forward to having a, a great social intersection. Weather's going to be fantastic, both for the parade and the events downtown. Thank you to the city of Cartersville and Tabarto County for their, uh, continued support of the events at, uh, Dillinger Park and, uh, taking a, uh, making, again, what should be a, a fun and joyous day possible out at Dillinger Park, so. That being said, uh, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.